Ready to go? All right, I will call the meeting to order. Everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of this land, a nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Just as an announcement, an executive session was held on October 11th for personnel reasons. Next, Commissioner Young, could you please entertain a motion to amend the agenda for tonight?
I make a motion to amend the agenda and add, under additional business, a proclamation to honor Ken Johnston.
Second.
I move in second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 My motion's good, five zero. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next, opening comments, Commissioner Evans. Do we have any for this evening?
Yes, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. Yes, so who is Ken Johnston? Last night's Inquirer had a story about historian Ken Johnston and his 75-mile walk to freedom through Chester County. Tomorrow, his journey will bring him to Cowan Township, Carver Court, Atkinson Hospital. Commissioner Kennedy will meet and walk with him. Mr. Johnston, who previously walked in Harriet Tubman's footsteps from Maryland to Canada, has said, "This walk is to meant to re-center and recognize the 19th and 20th century free African-American communities that were here and the lives they lived." Really excited about this. This Saturday, something else exciting, you don't want to miss Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company's open house. Come by between noon and three to learn more about all they do for us. There will be a vehicle rescue demonstration, apparatus, tool and gear displays, fire safety, and a fire extinguisher simulation, plus the big, the big sell, you get to meet Sparky the Firehouse Dog. Engine 38's been at our service since 1939. Please consider volunteering or making a financial contribution today. We've learned a lot from our managerial candidate search. One thing that we learned is that Cowan has a very coveted seat. They had many strong candidates who wanted to come and work here. The best always rises to the top. We're clear on who our next manager should be. Can't express how excited that we are about Cowan's future once they take the helm. We hope to vote on appointing them at our October 26 meeting. See you then. When we all work together, there's nothing we can't do. Spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, and resentments are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go round.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. All right, next on the agenda, we have citizens to be heard. Any in the township building at this time? I see no hands raised. Any in the Zoom world? Abby? None? All right, moving right along, Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp, what do we have?
Thank you. First thing is, I had talked to the board before and presented this, working with Ray Stackhouse in processing land development and subdivision applications. Your current subdivision ordinance does allow the township to be reimbursed for your consultant review fees. We wanted to make the process a little bit smoother as far as the inspection escrow. So there's the plan review that happens before a plan is approved, and then there's the inspections that occur after the plan is recorded and the development is being built. And just how administratively the township handles the payment of those bills was something that Ray asked us to take a closer look at and make amendments to the subdivision land development ordinance. So we had reviewed this with you. There's two sections, 137-13. Actually, that's the only section. So this will call out a procedure that sort of refers back to a resolution, and the resolution is where all the details are, sets forth all the fees for anything relating to subdivision land development. And it has differing fees, whether it's a plan review escrow or an inspection escrow. And it's really based on the inspection escrow, the big change is now it's going to be based on the value of the improvements being constructed. I think what was happening was there wasn't enough money in escrow for the township to be paying these consultant bills. And we were seeing that the developers were carrying a large balance owed back to the township. So this is hopefully with more money in hand, in cash, escrow, when a development's being built, this will help alleviate that problem. So the other provision in the SADO that we're suggesting is Section 137-47, and this came about where you have a land development plan that requires fire hydrants to be installed, and you have, there's no specific timeframe set for when that has to be installed. So you have a developer potentially coming wanting to build a building without the fire supply being in place. So this is just to make it very clear that if a land development requires a fire hydrant, that fire hydrant and the system that serves that fire hydrant has to be in place before you can start building the building. So those are two changes to the SADO. This did go to the County Planning Commission, and they have really no negative, they think it's a good idea. And your planning commission reviewed it. So if the board's comfortable with this, we could authorize an advertisement for you to adopt it. We would not be able to make it in time, we look. It's today. Actually, we could. We could still do it. No, we couldn't, because it has to be 14 and seven days out. So we'd have to do it at your November meeting if you're willing to move this forward. So I'm looking for a motion, again, if anybody has any questions on this, but otherwise a motion to advertise this ordinance.
All right, Commissioners, any questions on this? Some sense?
Motion out.
Residents, any questions here in the room? None at this time? Any in Zoom world? None at this time? Entertain a motion to approve. For advertising. To advertise.
I'll move.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, seconded by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's good, five zero.
Thank you. So we'll see that at your November meeting. The next thing is, and as the public is aware, the township undertook with the county, District County, a vision partnership program grant to work on updating the zoning ordinance. And that unfortunately, part of that process took place during COVID, which made it rather cumbersome and difficult. They did get a product from Ray Ott, who was a consultant that the township used. And I think that when the entire ordinance was being read by the board, there were some, you know, taking a couple steps back and saying, "This might not be exactly what we envisioned." So we started out on a process of having some workshop, work sessions, and, you know, working through some of the new zoning districts that the board wanted. We had conversations back with County Planning Commission, and the County Planning Commission is willing to allow you to enter a new contract. They do need a planner to be involved. So Nancy Sarcenello was actually assisting Ray Ott. She was acting as a subconsultant to Ray Ott and is very familiar with, I think, what the board's vision is, and has sent a proposal to you for consideration. I reviewed it. I had been involved, Ray and I being involved in those work sessions. I think we sort of understood what you liked about the vision that Ray Ott had and what you wanted to change. And I tried to bear an outline of what I thought Nancy would be helping you with, and that's really what she's come back with. So again, I'm satisfied with this. It's obviously what the board is satisfied with. If you're good with this proposal, what she'll do is she'll send it to the County Planning Commission. They'll review it. They've been in touch with her, so I think there has been communication. The county will then resend to you a contract to enter a new vision partnership program, and then we'll start on the way. So again, any questions that anyone has on this proposal or any changes you'd like to make, we should talk about that now.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of Nancy's, and we worked really well with her during that process. And I'm very excited that she's interested in taking, you know, helping us get over the finish line with this. I have no questions except for when do we say yes?
No other questions?
Okay, so I'll communicate that to Nancy. Thank you.
Please do.
Thank you.
I have nothing further, but Ray asked if I could stick around for the one matter, under his first, his first matter, Ray. Yeah, okay, so I'll stick around for that.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Ross from Gilmore and Associates to discuss Trail Segment Number Five. It's like a song.
Trail segment number five.
What do we have, Ross? Enlighten us.
So this is Trail Segment Number Five for the Beaver Creek Trail. So the township engages us to do an engineering design for this sale trail segment. And we've developed a preliminary design, so we wanted to bring that and show it to the Commissioners and then get any feedback before we take that, do all of the drawings for it. So just to give you a bit of an overview here on this color rendering, over on the left side here, this is Lloyd Park, and so that's the end turnaround. These are the existing park features. And then over here is the, like, the Archdiocese Athletic Fields. And in the center here is the existing dog park over at Lloyd Park. And so the proposed trail segment, it's intended to connect from Lloyd Park and follow, if you see this little bit lighter color here, I'll zoom in a little bit. So this is the proposed trail, which would weave its way through the open grassy areas sort of toward the north side of the dog park and trying to preserve existing trees as much as possible. You'll see here some relocated benches. There are a few benches that are presently located in this area that we would just need to move.
Oh, okay. Abby was looking at me, she knows.
Beautiful spot, beautiful spot, great views where we can move them down here into the, into the final alignment of the dog park.
We'll talk about that.
Yeah, sure, we can go over that. And, you know, as we work our way to the east, we see a few areas shaded with this blue color here and here. So these are existing wetlands, so we're taking the trail and dodging between those so that we don't have any wetland disturbance. And then so that, then it arcs around and enters the tree line here, so we'll have a little bit of tree clearing. And the trail, the purpose of this bend here is, there's a wetland also in here in the woods. And so we're just going around the end of that to avoid wetland disturbance there as well. And then we just take a turn and come across, this will be a proposed bridge here, so probably around a 45-foot span. And the bridge itself, we intend to be eight feet wide, whereas the rest of the trail would be a 10-foot-wide paved asphalt. That's the intention proposed there. And then we would just come down off the bridge and connect over to this part of the township's property and the eventual continuation further to the east. That's what they call Segment Six. And then Segment Four is across Lloyd Avenue on the outside of Lloyd Park. So this Segment Five here is basically a connection that crosses the creek and connects from Lloyd Park to around the area of the.
Okay, so it leads into the parking lot area?
Yes, so this, we would, this would be the end of our currently proposed Segment Five trail, and it would connect to these existing walkways that are running throughout Lloyd Park. And then down on this end, we're just sort of tying into general gravel area here, and then for future continuation. But this would at least provide a walking path where you could cross the creek safely with a, with a bridge here. And then, so if you, any residents in Downingtown, you know, residents from down there could be coming up and walking all the way to Lloyd Park, the dog park. And then future segments will create connections from areas further to the west and connect to Lloyd Park so that then any pedestrian trail system could come along from the west through Lloyd Park and then reach this.
How long is this segment?
So this segment's about 1,500 feet long, so just a little bit more than a quarter mile. And a few of the other interesting features here is, this is an existing gas line, the TC Energy Pipeline. So that's been a little bit of an impediment as we try to figure out how we need to run storm pipes through the site. But we've gotten all of their guidelines from the gas line company. We're working through that. And then up in the northwest area, this is where we're proposing to locate some stormwater management, with the reason being, this is the highest part of the site, and most of the rest of this area is all within the flood plain of the creek. So we're thinking if we locate our stormwater at the highest point and intercept some upstream runoff that, from existing other areas that are draining to the township's property, we can provide management of that water to reduce the rate and the volume, and then do that at a spot where it's less likely to come inundating during a large storm event so that we can still get some benefit out of that. And so that's why that's located there. The, just a couple important metrics here, the existing dog park is on the order of five acres an area. So after the trail takes up a little bit of that space, it becomes down to about three and a half acres, which is still quite a large dog park. And we would be proposing a fence, you can see here, it's the continuous line with the little circles, a fence here to keep dogs from the dog park separate from the shared use path users, because that could be a problematic conflict between bikes and dogs. So there's, on each end here, there's like a little double gate entry, like where you open one gate, come in and close it, and then open the next gate, and then you're into the main dog park area. So that, there's one located there right by Lloyd Park, and then also another one towards the east end of the dog park. And so they, yeah, that's, that's an overview of what we had in mind for the proposed trail, and we wanted to get your feedback, see if there were any things you wanted to see differently or investigated before we continue forward and prepare all the really detailed drawings for this design.
Can I just pipe in real quick for a little bit of background? Because I don't think everybody was involved when we did the original trail study. So that, he came out in 2019, and we worked with Briny Wyne Conservancy and had a bunch of public meetings and a lot of great feedback from the public. And the goal was to create this trail that would connect Lloyd Park with Municipal Park and also be a component of the Chester Valley West extension. So the idea was that all of the trail systems stemming from the Chester Valley Trail would connect in through this way and eventually out the other end of the township into Coatesville, eventually past Coatesville and connect up with the, the Anula Low Grade Trail in Langastor. So the vision is that you'll be able to cycle one day from Harrisburg down to Philly via all these trail connections. So this was a trail that had been envisioned, I think, way before I was here. But we narrowed down, we looked at all the different kind of configurations, and this was the most recommended layout. And as part of that plan, they broke it into six segments. And we're oddly, starting with Segment Five, as was recommended to us because this is all on property the township currently owns, and Segment One and Two are existing trail. It's not as wide as we eventually want it to be, but it already exists. So this is new trail that is on property that we already own. And where you see down in the right-hand corner by, that's a pump station, right?
Yes, right here, it's a meter station.
Yeah, so there is a drive.
That's a pump station?
Meter station.
Aston meter station.
Oh, that's what that is, okay.
So the township actually owns that driveway that you see going south, and that connects to the sidewalk system in Downingtown. So even if Downingtown never completes Segment Six of the trail, we'll still be able to connect through the park, onto the sidewalks, and then onto the Struble Trail, and eventually the Chester Valley West Trail. But I do believe Downing, it's in their plan, like their strategic plans as well. They have easements from the Archdiocese already to do that Segment Six that would keep going the rest of the way into their park system and their trails. So this is just where we're starting, and we thought it was the most doable to get some shovels in the ground. And that's hopefully a long-winded explanation, but thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Yeah.
And thank you, Craig, very much.
The, the connection where the, the dog entrance is, the double doorway, can you explain where that would be again? Because right now it comes off of that circle, correct?
Right, so if you were coming off of the circle, you'd just walk a short distance here, and then it would be off to your right. So this little enclosure right here is that double gate entrance.
Oh, you come in from the top and out to the right?
It's a little hard to see, but right here, there's a little gate symbol. So you come in right here and then through this one, so. And then similarly, down all the way at the east end of the dog park, another gate here.
Oh, okay.
And then that way.
And the reason for that, for the other entrance?
I was just thinking if people are coming from this direction as well, that they could get into Dog Park here instead of having to walk all the way along into the other end, get into Dog Park.
Anecdotally, at least half the people that use the dog park are currently walking from that direction in Downingtown.
Yep.
So you would have a fence on the south side of this whole, the trail?
Yes, that, that would continue all of the way down and tie into the bridge to enclose this whole area as the dog park. And this, this wooded section is not part of the three acres. I didn't count that since it's kind of not as much.
And I see another dotted line from the entrance off of the circle, the parking lot, there's another dotted line. Is that a fence as well coming down on the left side there?
Yes, so there's an existing fence here.
Yes, like spotty.
A few gaps.
Yeah.
So we would, so like you can see here, the X symbol is the existing fence. And then we fill in a few gaps here with, with proposed fencing. And then where we cross the gas line easement, we have a couple sets of gates so that the gas company can get through. They would have keys to the locks that would keep them shut for an hour.
And is there another hill to put this bench on? I know there's only two benches.
Yeah.
At this point, hopefully we have more. Or even, I don't know if you'd entertain the idea of a bench along the trail, people can sit as they're.
I like that.
I like that a lot.
We could certainly show some additional benches along the trail.
That was Ross's idea, but I thought you would want to stay in the dog park, so.
Well, I would like it to stay on the mound up top there, but apparently we have other plans for that, so.
We may be able to find a spot.
And I had three trees around that bench.
I know.
So are you gonna move the trees?
Absolutely.
Yes.
No, no special treatment here. Now what's best for the community.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Very.
Excellent. I'll open questions to the public.
Have a hand in the audience, it's been up.
Well, we do have Tony here. I'll ask for Tony. Come on up to the mic, please.
Tony DiSario 251, Loomis Avenue. Isn't that walking trail part of the Lloyd Avenue housing, the project over there, the homes?
It wouldn't be part of that.
Wouldn't be part of that?
Because it's on our property, not theirs.
Okay. Next question, where are we getting the money from?
That's a good question, Tony.
So we would hope to.
So you're not gonna do nothing? Do you get a grant, right?
That, that's what we're working towards, but most, the most difficult thing we've run into is a lot of places won't fund the engineering. It's tough to get a grant for engineering, so what we want to do is engineer it and then go and receive grants for it.
But everything Ross has done so far was done with a grant from DCD. We got a $70,000 grant from DCD for the beginning of this engineering.
How much is the total cost of the engineering?
It's more like $200,000, including the bridge and the permitting, so we're working on that part next.
So you won't put a burden on the residents and, you know, you know, with getting a grant? But I don't want to see you waste the $170,000 for an engineering, and then you have to put out money for, because it's, it's a burden on the residents. And you're here to help the residents, right? So I don't think you really need that trail.
All right, aren't there box turtles back there?
Did a bog turtle study, and there are not any, so.
Already looked for them. But Tony, you're more than welcome to walk that trail and look for them. All right, and, and did we have another hand raised?
Alicia.
Yes, Alicia, welcome! Are you there? I can't, it's a small picture.
She's there, I can see her. She's muted though.
Are you muted?
I think I'm in now. Hi!
Hey, Alicia, how are you?
Hey, it's Alicia Carini from 103 Ayerwood Drive. Hi, everyone. And I, I had these thoughts planned before Tony spoke, so in no way am I trying to change his opinion. But I wanted to say that this is a really big deal for a community that a lot of us, many of us, you know, we pay money to come to a township that has trails. So I'm super excited. I live across the street from Lloyd Park. I often go across the street and I walk that very small loop around the volleyball courts, and I feel like I'm, you know, playing a broken record, so I think it's just huge. It's a huge thing. My questions are, when, when do we think this portion would be completed? And then I have a question about Segment Four.
Good questions? Do we?
I guess that's an engineering question about when it might potentially be completed.
It depends on the money.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be dependent on funding, so, you know, we, I'm, I think it's something like in the next year or so, we probably could have the permits necessary, but then, then the funding for actual construction is, is an unknown at this point.
Couple years at least, optimistically, I would say.
Okay, and Abby, thanks for the detailed explanations and the proximity of everything. The second question is, you mentioned Segment Four, which I think would be going westward, and I believe it would potentially be going behind my house. I'm not sure, maybe this is too early. Would it be on the other side of the creek, the south side of the creek, instead of the north side?
We are looking at the north side right now, and that was as a result of that feasibility study that we did. I think there are more wetlands on the south side than there are on the north side. So we are just starting to look into a possible, we were just out this week trying to figure out where the best spot is to investigate further to start the design on that, but it would definitely be on the north side.
Okay, so the north side would be the side where I live, no problem on that. Again, I'm thrilled about it. I think it's a huge amenity. And for me, paying tax dollars is actually something I do want to see in a township, so, great job. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thanks, Alicia.
Yeah, bye-bye.
I'm sure you would also agree that it'd be wonderful, on that north side there along the creek, we gotta have a bench for Tony to sit down on while you're walking, right behind our house.
I'll have his lemonade ready for coffee.
Absolutely.
All right, any other hands raised?
That's the first pitch.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, this was pretty much just for our discussion. Ross, thank you so much for enlightening us here.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate your feedback, and we'll keep moving forward.
All right, and we'll talk further about those benches.
We will, for sure.
Point, Ross, before you leave, when do you think you might have an engineering report on the Spackman Davis Farmhouse roof?
Yeah, that should be fairly soon, so I can go back and check in with our structural team tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you. We're busy looking for people with money.
All right, thank you, Ross. Next on the agenda, Building Life and Safety, Mr. Stackhouse, what do we have here?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll try to be as brief as possible, because I definitely want to watch the game as well.
We have three monitors here. We can flip one over.
This is fairly important to me, and obviously there's, you know, the fire companies here, it's important to them as well. So I wanted to just give a quick, quick background to lead into Chief Taylor's, hopefully fairly short presentation. Be, be to the point, though. The township has obviously funded the fire service, you know, forever to some degree or another. As far back as the 1980s, the township provided funding to the fire company to purchase apparatus, equipment, and even offset, even back then, some career staffing on the fire company's side. As our township grew and our community grew, obviously the risks grew, the hazards grew, and at the same time, costs increased, and we've seen a huge downturn in. And at the same time, costs increased, and we've seen a huge downturn in volunteers uh, across the board, not just emergency services, as you all know, we've had several conversations about that. So the the need for funding uh to the fire company greatly increased because they, you know, they're not able to get the funds that they used to, you just can't do chicken barbecues and get the money to pay for fire apparatus. You can't, uh, even if you could, you don't have the people to do that these days, so, you know, that need has just increased tenfold. Uh, in two thousand and two, the township recognized that the fire company uh had a need for adequate resources and purchased a rescue engine to replace an aging unit previous. That unit's in service today as as Rescue Thirty Eight. Then in twenty fifteen, uh, the need to replace the primary engine that responds to primarily to fire calls uh, needed to be replaced as well. And the township stepped up, that unit was twenty-two years old, had been in service since nineteen ninety-three. And and the township was very instrumental as a cooperative partner to to purchase that apparatus and fund the fund. Today, like I said, we're in a position now, we have another twenty-two-year-old piece of apparatus that Chief will tell you, you know, why we really need to get that replaced sooner rather than later. It's worth quickly mentioning, um, that this isn't just a need for the fire company. You know, the township has uh since two thousand and four been instrumental in being a cooperative partner with the fire company in not only purchasing equipment and funding, but providing staffing to supplement the volunteer staff. Uh, we hired the first full-time firefighter in two thousand and four. Uh, in two thousand and fifteen, we started produ- uh, providing additional funding to the volunteer fire company for them to hire some part-time staffing to increase uh those personnel. In two thousand and twenty-two, we hired two part-time inspectors that are also firefighters. Uh, township staff would respond to fire calls and operate this equipment. And then last year, the township hired a full-time assistant fire marshal who responds, covers stationed shifts and operates this apparatus, so, um, you know, really is a need for both of us, the township and the volunteer fire company. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Taylor.
Uh, so I uh, I'm sure Commissioner Young, Commissioner Mullen are kinda tired of hearing me pester them and pestering them about this piece of equipment, but uh, as mentioned, thi- this is truly an invaluable piece of equipment. Uh, kinda serves dual functions, a pumper that can respond to numerous fires, as you can see on the slideshow, that's kind of its secondary. And then it has, it's kind of a toolbox on wheels, uh, handles a lot of auto accidents, which probably comprise about a fifth of our call volume. Special type rescues, obviously, we're a unique township, we we see not only residential, we we have a fairly significant up and down Lincoln Highway, commercial uh district, uh, and some special hazards, especially, obviously, we have A G C Chemical up on South Bailey Road, uh, just to name a few. Uh, so all those, while they can't maybe handle the entire incident, can get the folks that respond started before we can get additional assets there. Uh, obviously, the other thing, as I named, was those special hazards, the haz- hazmat responses between the Amtrak Railway, uh, the thirty bypass, Lincoln Highway, you name it. Uh, we 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 see a ton of traffic, a ton of unique hazards. Um, and then obviously, we do use this piece of equipment to assist our EMS friends. Uh, again, carries EMS equipment such as Stokes baskets, things like that for unique type rescues. So obviously, the why, that's what everybody wants to know, especially when you look at the meeting or the agenda and you see that giant price tag. Uh, so obviously, safety is the number one thing we preach in the fire service, whether it's our safety starts with ourselves first, followed by our fellow members, followed by every other person on the incident. So this truck that is currently twenty twenty, twenty years old, uh, obviously, twenty years ago, the safety was much different. We roll into twenty twenty-three, obviously, there there's new standards from the National Fire Protection Agency that we kind of need to follow. Uh, safety for the crews as far as, as you can see, the airbag systems, uh, that's now, uh, they have the airbag side impact and I know Chris Ogan Chamber who's here from the dealer can go much more in-depth into that, but from fire trucks, they've just evolved uh from the safety. The other thing that you'll probably notice during the day, currently with this piece of apparatus is, you can't really tell if the emergency lights are on. That's a big problem. Uh, we've been very fortunate on the thirty bypass, um, where we've kind of had additional apparatus to kind of show, hey, we are there, we're not just stopped. Uh, but it is very difficult to see with the emergency lighting, and that's a big piece that we rely on. I I mean, luckily, we have the sirens going, but the the twenty-year-old lighting and everything, it's kind of gone from the halogen in your homes to the LED today, the 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 new equipment, it's much more eco-friendly, obviously, things like that. For the LEDs on fire trucks, they're brighter, the scene lighting's brighter, uh, it just creates a much safer atmosphere for us. Obviously, the next big thing is the antiquated technology, twenty years ago versus today. Obviously, our vehicle extrication equipment uh is a big thing, that's something we heavily rely on. It's tough to get parts for it right now, if at all. Um, obviously, that is true for anything, uh, but that that's a big thing we're facing right now, and it's very, very uh expensive to maintain. As I mentioned, with the emergency vehicle lighting and things like that, between the bulbs, we have to replace. Uh, and then the other, from a pumper standpoint, the computerized pump, while great in theory, we like in the fire service, we love to keep it simple. At three A M. when I'm half asleep, uh, the computerization is kind of tough to maintain. Um, obviously, if the computer, just like we do with our work computers, if it doesn't like you, it'll give you issues. We can't, uh, we can't have that on an incident scene, we need to ensure it works. Um, and unfortunately, as it gets older, the cost to maintain it, that's the big thing. Which brings down to the maintenance, uh, and it's probably something that, again, Commissioner Mullen, Commissioner Young, that you've heard me say, uh, over the last two years, time and time again, about the cost of uh needing to maintain this piece. It it it's actually probably over twenty-five percent of our maintenance budget just on this piece, I mean, three years ago, we replaced the thirty wa- or the thirty K W generator. Fortunately, we have to have it, it powers our scene lights, it powers, uh, the needed electric to run some of our tools, things like that. Uh, last year, it was, and of course, with these big ticket items, it's out of service for a prolonged period of time. Sometimes months, uh, no, last year with our uh part of the pump rebuild, it was out of service for just shy of two months. Uh, so we were kind of crossing our fingers that our primary pumper, we wouldn't run into any issues or anything like that, it's just, it's just like a vehicle. Uh, and then the final, which is the big, big push, uh, and something with the secondary piece being a pumper, it's not a very user-friendly, obviously, from the computerized pump, but also from a firefighter standpoint, when it comes to safety, you're reaching up very high to try and get the hose, you're standing on very limited side bumpers, um, and again, you come off, you roll your ankle, you're already wearing basically a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five pounds of gear, and now gravity's pushing you down as you come down to pull this hose, so that's also the big thing with safety. So obviously now, so what we're uh proposing, obviously, would be a twenty twenty-seven. Again, it would function as a rescue pumper. We'd actually increase our water amount with this, uh, without reducing any sort of compartment space for the tools we need. It will be the more functional secondary engine if ours is out of service. We're able to bring the hose lower to the ground where we can stand on the ground to deploy it, rather than climbing up and reaching way up to grab it. Um, and we're pretty much from a training standpoint mimicking our current engine. So from a driver's training perspective, we don't have to learn two different pumps, the layouts are gonna be all the same. The hose lines and hose lengths are all gonna be the same, it it's just gonna be additional functioning piece of a rescue. So that that's kind of the big drivers, um, and then obviously, I did bring some of our community members here tonight. Uh, so you can see their faces. Before I turn it back over to Ray, I guess this last one's, so this is just kind of the rough spec we have right now, rough drawing. As you can see, uh, so it still kind of looks like what we currently have, uh, but just, again, bringing hose lower for safety, upgraded lighting, um, and we're actually able to carry probably with some of the newer equipment, we'll be able to carry additional for today's calls.
Bringing it into the twenty-first century.
Yeah, this truck outlive us.
And by the time we do that, unfortunately, the next, the the next piece of equipment, the way, unfortunately.
Yeah, this this is long overdue.
Yeah, twenty years, yeah.
Commissioner, I'll just add, so so as we've uh let you know, unfortunately, one of the downsides that uh the results of COVID, the COVID world we lived in, and maybe it'll be that way forever, is the the length of time it takes to get uh equipment, material, and the lack of manpower. Which, again, nobody seems to be able to explain, but that has set the service industry back, you know, year, literally years. Uh, there was a time probably before COVID where you could get a fire truck, once you ordered it, you could get it in sixteen, eighteen months. Uh, you know, two years at the outside. And now the delivery time on this truck and and a lot of different manufacturers is at at best three years. From the time you sign the contract, so as the chief mentioned, you know, by the time we get this truck, we're already three years further down the road. I'll be very frank, and I'm I'm sure he would agree with me, I don't know if the current uh rescue pumper has three without costing us a significant amount of money. Two different times in the last, uh, probably three to five years, we've had to take money out of the replacement fund because the cost of those repairs has been, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars. So that's, we really are to that point. We did choose, so so how we did this, the chief put a committee together. Um, uh, the assistant fire marshal, myself sat on that committee with most of the volunteer fire company members that are here. Uh, and we started looking at a vendor, very difficult process as well. It used to even be more difficult, uh, can you go to the next slide? Previously, uh, you would work with uh several different vendors, you would try to get a spec together, uh, which means all the details of a fire truck, literally, every knob, every light, everything. Then you would have to bid it out if the municipality was fine. The downside to that, we ran into when we purchased the engine, uh, if those bids come back all over, well, we budgeted, we have to throw the project out, or even worse, potentially, if somebody gives us a low bid and you really didn't want that manufacturer because they don't have a good reputation, they don't have a good service company behind them, uh, then you had to throw all the bids out. Well, one of the pluses in the last five years or more is almost every manufacturer went CoStar. Uh, CoStars, as you know, go ahead and say next. CoStars is a cooperative program through the state that kind of levels out playing field. Basically, to put it real simple, it makes sure everybody's playing by the same set of rules. Uh, what that does is it allows us to pick a vendor that we're comfortable working with, make sure we're getting a good product, and we don't have to bid that out. Um, so that's, you know, we chose Glick Manufacturing, which is a fairly local company. Um, they're the dealer or the broker, and Pierce is the manufacturer. Pierce has a very long history of being a very high-quality product. You're able to do modifications that suit your specific needs, uh, and and not break the bank. The plus with Glick, again, being a local dealer, they do service, so service is always a major issue for the fire trucks. Again, every time we put it out of service, meaning that it's not ready to respond, to go get repairs or just annual maintenance, we, sometimes we have to drive hours to be able to get those trucks there, at least with Glick, it's fairly close. We did, the the salesman is here, in case there's any technical questions. But the plus with that is Chris Ogan Chamber is is a very well-known, and he's a firefighter himself. He's a past chief of Oxford Fire Company, and uh, you know, so we were confident that we were getting, you know, the the straight answer, and he wasn't trying to sell us something just to make money. He's been in this position before, he's built several fire trucks as a fire chief in the past. And that's, leads us to literally the last thing, which is obviously the cost. When the township bought the uh truck that this is replacing, it was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, uh, that was in two thousand and two, so if you do the math, it's almost thirty thousand dollars um, a year increase since that time. Again, Chris would be able to tell you the last few trucks they sold, uh, that one point two seven seven is right about right in the ballpark, uh, it's not high, it's not low, it's it's like right in the middle of what uh they've been selling the trucks. That's our spiel. I mean, unless the chief has something else to add.
Yeah, the the other thing I was gonna say is, and folks have probably heard it. Unfortunately, fire trucks are not like cars, you can't just go to our local Ford or Toyota dealer, pick one off the lot and drive it home. It it unfortunately takes time. Luckily, we realized we have a functional engine, so from a pumper standpoint, why duplicate the wheel? Or reinvent the wheel, rather, we have it, mimic it, and they're able to do that. Uh, so that's kind of the big thing, if it was, I wish it was that easy, we could go to the dealership and just go, yep, I like this one. Solved a lot of issues.
Well, now, both you and Ray have worked on this spec as well, just to make sure you have everything you need.
Yeah, so, I I mean, I I give kudos to the committee. I mean, they they've spent hours even outside of of meetings, it's kind of funny, I get texts from, oh, what about this, like, thoughts on it? Cause honestly, you you you're kind of looking at what other people have, but you need to make this truck unique to our needs in Callan Township. We're we're not building this for the outside world, we're building this and so, I I mean, the the effort that the entire committee spent, uh, and Chris is probably tired of seeing emails more from Ray than any of us, but, um, but everybody's worked super hard on this.
It it was definitely a group effort, we wouldn't have been able to get a presentation to you. I mean, we were working on it up until the meet, right before the meet, so, um, and again, uh, you know, most of the volunteers that are on the committee, again, they don't have time to do it during the day, they're doing it at night, you know, on top of you know, what they do for a living.
I would just say that the budget committee met, and we talked about uh putting this into, you know, waiting till next year to to begin the process. Uh, and then uh Ray and the chief brought up that there is a price increase on November first. It's not massive, but it's still, you know, an additional cost, uh, if we wait until after November. Um, we do have several hundred thousand stashed away in the equipment replacement fund. Uh, we would probably use some of that as a down payment and then have to either finance or you know, come up with the cash to to pay for that. And we do have a line item in the fire fund that we fund every year for equipment replacement. So we could use that to pay any kind of note we might need uh in order to pay for it. Um, but uh, myself and Paul thought it was a good idea to bring it to the board before the budget presentation, because there is the price increase, there is the wait time. You know, the longer we wait, the longer it'll be. And the more it will cost, so we thought it was a good idea to bring it now and um see what the board thought. Um, it is, it is a big ticket item, um, and if I'm not mistaken, we don't owe anything at the signing of the contract. It's uh closer to delivery that we begin to um incur costs.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, the other thing I would add, exactly, we we don't, there's no payment upfront that's required. It would be basically when the truck's ready, uh, when the committee goes out and does the final approval, operates the truck, says, yep, we're ready, it's good, we're signing off, then, um, I think within thirty days, then then that's when it's due. You'll see some other payment options in there, but these days, that's something that has changed as well. There's there's no real benefit to to paying early unless you're gonna pay the whole thing. You know, if you have one point two seven seven laying around, we could pay for all of them. But the plus is, we we do have three years to figure out or save money to try to offset that.
We may actually have a majority of that money within the three-year period, and then I know they have uh very low interest uh rate loans.
Yeah, we, I mean, we also would be eligible for, you know, most likely a two percent loan as well, and there's other funding options out there that we, again, we have three years to look into, that, you know, uh, again, we could pursue.
There may be some brands that come available within that period of time as well. If they're not already out there, but.
I can't tell you how many times I've seen Rescue Thirty Eight go by my house. Like every day, at least once. I, I mean, this is a busy vehicle. And, uh, I just went off, went off on a, a developer about earlier tonight about how important providing safety to our residents is.
And we're growing and.
So, you, you know where I am, right?
And ambulances and fire trucks are, you don't need them till you need them, but when you need them, you really need them. So, you know, you can't have a piece of equipment that's like duct taped together showing up to, you know, fire calls, so.
Not quite that bad.
Yeah. Well, in three years, we might. But, you know, to, to that point, you know, we, we do have an obligation to our residents to keep them safe and, um, you know, we picked this meeting because if people had questions, we still have another meeting, you know, before the price increase. But, um, yeah, we're, we're ready to go to move tonight if, if the board, uh, wants to move forward with it.
I'll, uh, I'll ask for questions. Any questions here or, or comments?
Please ask questions, I know this. This is a big ticket item.
Everyone knows we need it.
And if you don't want to ask questions tonight, come by Saturday, it's rain or shine, like Mark said.
We've been plugged into this.
That's right.
We, we.
I voted on the last one, so I know that was hard. But you have to do it.
Yeah, we, we didn't enter into this lightly, I mean, we know it's, it's massive.
Yeah.
Uh, a massive commitment on the township's part, but, um, again, it's just, it's just needed. I mean, the, the bottom line is if we don't replace it during routine maintenance or even, uh, uh, emergency maintenance on the engine, then we're, you'd basically have paid staff and volunteers not responding to calls for residents.
Right, you can't do that.
And unfortunately, we're kind of behind the eight ball on trying to get this replaced anyway.
Severely, because the chief wasn't far off, I mean, by time, if you ordered it now, by time this truck comes in, we're literally three to five years away from having to replace the current engine.
Right.
So we're, we're, we're way behind in, uh, curve there.
I, I guess the next discussion, not here, uh, not at this point, but contingency plan. If, uh, you run into issues with the present truck pumper.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly.
We can discuss that.
Absolutely.
Another time.
Yeah, because if we can make it three years until this thing's ready to go, that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, luckily, in the past, when we've had some, some issues, local fire companies who have, I'll say, a reserve piece or something gracious enough to loan, gone through in the insurance and everything, unfortunately, they can't keep the cost to maintain a reserve piece either, so. Cross our fingers, we don't have to ever come to that. Uh, but we'll, it's something we'll keep in the back of our mind, and we can definitely plan, plan for it to have in the back pocket if needed.
Okay. Right, and, and what are the plans with the, uh, the pumper now, and once we've replaced it?
So I, it would, obviously because it's township-owned, but, uh, would be to sell, uh, whether to, like I said, I'm not, you can go to a local, uh, company that sells the fire trucks, sell municipal bid, but being that it's township-owned, obviously hits, it, it was in sole your discretion.
Okay.
We're not gonna get much for it, but we'll put it up for sale.
All right, so we'll figure that out. All right, uh, any questions from residents online? None at this time?
No.
Yes? Just into the mic there, Tony. Tony DiSario, thank you.
Tony DiSario. Don't these fire truck companies, uh, build fire trucks and keep them in stock? Where you could buy one that's, like you said, because I used to work at auto cars, trucks, and they used to have stock trucks. Stock, uh, gins or whatever.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, that, that's a phenomenal question, we did look into that. Um, obviously with the cost of equipment, we're now fighting hundreds, if not thousands, of other fire companies for maybe one or two or three of what they do of stock pumpers. The other thing is, stock you get, you, basically you get what's here. So the stock don't necessarily fit Callan Township's needs. So in order to retrofit for Callan specifically, you're still throwing more money into it now. I, I can't honestly say, because we've never gone down that route, but, uh, you, you're still having to pay a lot of money to try and retrofit to. But, yeah, so it's still going to cost a lot of money, that's the big thing. But, I mean, most of these, these trucks, a lot of them still have like that, a lot of hose, higher hose beds, there are some that are lower. Uh, but the safety and the components that we would need specifically Callan are not necessarily there. But that's a great question. Yes.
Thank you, Tony. Patrick, I, I believe you and your entire staff deserve this, I think the township residents deserve this.
Yeah.
The board, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is five zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My committee at Fire Company.
Thank you, okay.
Keep us safe.
Long time coming.
I, I do want to thank Chris O'Gan Chamberlain, he's the dealer, the, from the broker, for coming and spending the time.
Go back there, okay.
Thank you for coming on.
Whew, that was exciting.
I know.
All right.
All right, uh, Ray, what do we got next here?
Commissioners, I'm gonna make it a little easier on you, uh, the next item I had on the agenda, uh, was for a tow lift, um, that we had been planning on purchasing, but after, um, I got this information and sent it to you, we checked with the vendor, and actually, uh, if we ordered that particular unit, it wouldn't be here until the end of 2024. So we started looking immediately, and there are other options out there, um, that potentially won't get us to like the first quarter of 2024, but, uh, I didn't have that information enough of it to present it, so I'm gonna ask the table that if we can put it back on the agenda next meeting.
Excellent.
And did you inform, uh, Abby that we were getting a lift?
Not yet, she's just hearing it.
Oh, she just smiling over that.
No, 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 she knows about the lift, she was getting ready to get up and do a big recent.
Yeah, we need that.
It's all for, uh, we're still getting it, and we're gonna try to get it as cooked as we can, but, uh, we're getting a couple other bids. Uh, unfortunately, it, it looks like maybe we may have to wait till the first quarter. We can order now, but, uh, I'll have something for the next meeting for sure.
Okay. Thanks, Ray. And just so the residents know, this is, we have to rent these.
Yeah, we pay a lot of them.
And, and we need it a lot, and poor Tom Parr has to do the tree, so, uh.
Tallis but still cannot touch the top.
And they are, they're, they're, they're very expensive to rent, I mean, they're anywhere from eighteen hundred to over two thousand dollars every time we rent it. And we do, I mean, we use it a lot, and there's, we definitely miss it when we decide not to rent it because it's, it's just too expensive, so. Uh, the next item I have on the agenda actually, um, is, uh, for consideration to sign a professional service agreement with Jampro Cleaning and Disinfection, uh, for the commercial office cleaning of the admin building and the police buildings. Uh, I would actually ask to, uh, table that as well, uh, because we're still awaiting, uh, a couple references. Um, and shame on me, I did not have those, um, for you guys to consider tonight, but I will have them for next week. And if we can't get them, then we'll have a different conversation.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
End of Phillies have started, so.
Oh, I should be winning by now.
All right, uh, well, then I'll, I'll ask the board, do we want to discuss the food truck or try to get to the Phillies?
Well, I, Phillies aside, I think with budget season and all, we've been a little stretched. Let's table that baby, and we'll have all our notes ready for the next meeting.
Okay.
Or, or can I suggest so that you don't have to keep doing that, can you just remove it and we'll just reconvene on it in January?
Yeah, I think so, I, I.
You only have a couple more meetings, and you're gonna be focused on budget a hundred percent.
I, I had also said, you know, we, um, once the new manager gets here, maybe, you know, look over that with us and, you know, we can, we can work on this.
There's so many other things.
All right, uh, next, consideration to approve the September twenty eighth Board of Commissioner minutes. Any, uh, additions, corrections needed? If not, entertain a motion to approve?
I'm gonna abstain since I wasn't here.
I'm staying. Won't all jump at it?
So moved.
All right, so moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy, all in favor? Say aye.
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 I said aye.
Yeah, you did, I'd have it. Motion's good, four and one upstand. Next, uh, consider, uh, so used to reading for the planning committee. Uh, Finance Department, Ms. Swan, we have a, a check run, five, five thousand, or fifty thousand eight hundred and eighty-three to fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. And you're voiding a few checks, fifty thousand eighty, eighty-four to fifty thousand eight ninety. I did not catch the voided ones. Oh, something happened to them, so you need to void? Okay, understood.
The expenses.
Okay. All right, any questions on the bills? Not entertain a motion to approve? So moved. Hey, moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Uh, Board of Commissions, uh, first of all, Park and Rec.
Hey, oof, lots going on at Park and Rec, as usual, keeping everybody moving and grooving through the township. So our next major event will be our Halloween party, and we'll get all our little characters out and trick-or-treaters to come out to Municipal Park on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. Uh, from one to three, is that right? Uh, and unfortunately, if we get rain, it'll be Sunday, October the twenty-ninth. So we're really looking for a nice event for the children, so please come out and support us. Also, getting a little busy here. We're getting ready for our Christmas events. Uh, we're gonna be doing the tree lighting planning, uh, getting ready for Santa for all our little ones, and also the holiday home decorating contest. So we'll have more information coming on the criterias for the decorating, home decorating contest, and our lineup of events for the tree lighting ceremony and the, uh, events around our Christmas. Um, caroling and smores and all kind of great things that are being discussed to make it a family event here at the township. There's also a, is it a pajama drive for fostering hope? Could you elaborate on that a little bit for me, please, Abby?
Yeah, so, um, each year we've been choosing kind of a different, um, not fundraiser, but a collection, uh, at the tree lighting event, and this year, uh, Parks and Rec would like to do a pajama drive for foster kids, so we'll be collecting new pajamas, uh, anywhere from newborn on up to adult sizes, so we're gonna promote that a lot more, uh, but those will go to foster kids in Chester County, so buy some cute PJs.
Yes, so we're looking forward to that. And also on November fourth, there's gonna be a, a tree planting event at Beaver Renault, and looking for volunteers to sign up for that as well, from one to four.
Exactly. Yep, the signup information is on Facebook and on our website.
How many trees?
A hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty trees.
Need some volunteers.
And also our Good Deeds Day. That's coming up, that's new.
Uh, Good Deeds Day is, um, the Coatsville Area Girl Scouts, the service unit, and they are gonna come to Callan Park and do some good deeds and help take care of the gardens, and they did the cute little pavers around the, around the pollinator beds and things like that, um, and then the older girls do, um, stormwater marking, so they do stencils on the stormwater, uh, drains along, we did Geo Carlson this last time, uh, that say, you know, this drains into a stream, so don't dunk your garbage into it, basically, so fun stuff.
So, yeah, a lot of going on in a little bit of time, but we're gonna close out the year with a bang and just have a lot of fun and get the little ones out and the big kids out, and just enjoy each other as we prepare to, uh, close out this year. Been a very busy year, and I, I enjoy working with Parks and Rec, always, my mind is always going, we're already thinking about new things for next year and, uh, staying on top of everything, and we're good to have, you know, leadership from Abby and the, the team that works together with Park and Recs, the committee is outstanding. I mean, I mean, they just dream of things, I'm a dreamer too, but they dream, and, uh, good ideas are always coming, and they're coming faster than we're moving, but they're coming, so if you have any ideas or any interest in joining, you know, just reach out to Abby and let's go, we got a lot for you to do. Uh, for Cog, um, we met and, uh, actually, we're looking to see if the township was interested in joining the Western Chester County Chambers of Commerce at Vitrine Place up in, uh, Valley Township. So do we have anybody that's interested in going on November the third to represent the township?
We're set up.
We have somebody to speak, we just need somebody to, to speak on behalf of the township. And also there was a, a guest speaker from C Chester County Digital Alliance. Interesting, they just were sharing information about the access to internet. And as a township and the municipalities that were present, are we getting good reception? Do we have any areas in the township that are not getting good reception, and if so, we need to report it? I mean, there were some indications that some of the Reed Street areas were not getting good reception by the reports in that area for internet services. I'm not sure, I don't even know who to direct to even inquire about that, but pretty lengthy presentation. Other than that, everybody was just sharing ideas of what they're gonna be doing, you know, throughout this last quarter of the year. A lot of development that's going on throughout Chester County, throughout our municipalities. I mean, everything's blowing up everywhere, I mean, between Valley and Callan and some of the smaller municipalities, uh, a lot of events are going on throughout the holiday, but development, phew. I mean, everywhere you go, there are tentile streets, and they're building everywhere, if you can find a square footage of land, they're putting like a double twin on it, so everybody's like eagerly and aggressively, you know, developing, and, you know, we want to be a part of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. And next, Municipal Authority, short and sweet, uh, contractor for the twenty twenty-three grouting project is continuing to work on phase five. Uh, also Gilmore, that's Ross, that was here earlier, Gilmore is currently finalizing the bid documents for the twenty twenty-four grouting project, uh, which should be posted on Penn Bid in mid-October. The sewer repair project will involve the testing of all pipe joints and grouting of joints that fail the test for approximately forty-two hundred and fifty linear feet of eight-inch diameter gravity. And there are, uh, no real new update, we're still trying to, uh, put things together with the expansion. All right, and Fire Board, uh, we just met here. We, we did great things here, so, yeah, we didn't have a meeting, uh, since last, uh, board met, meetings. And, uh, moving on to our favorite thing, Historical Commission?
Historical Commission met on September twentieth. Due to a bug going around, only seven of our eleven members were present, but there were two guests, uh, who also came along. One of our guests had attended historic Callan Elementary School and shared about having been pen pals with a student in Callan, England. Maybe that's something we can restart. Uh, the honors keep rolling in, one of our members has been asked to write an article about the July Town Tour for the fall issue of the CCHPN Ledger, and was also asked to present a case study on the tour's success um, at the Fall CCPC, CCA, Chester County Plan and Commission, CCHPN workshop. All subcommittees reported updates, we approved our twenty twenty-four budget request and reviewed four events for twenty twenty-four, all a part of making Spackamadillo Farm a place for residents and visitors to gather, enjoy community and serenity. We touched on updates to our section of the Callan website, a potential five oh one C three. Our annual report is due, uh, Q one, twenty twenty-four, we talked about America two fifty, and possible involvement with the new twinning committee. Hometown Heritage Marker Grants was tabled till October. Speaking of October, our October meeting will be next Wednesday, the eighteenth, at seven PM, you can join us right here live or from home via Zoom. We're a fun group, we like getting things done, please consider. We're a fun group that like getting things done. Please consider coming to one of our meetings. And while you're considering things, please consider joining Parks and Rec. Without their help, our historic events would not be possible. They meet the first Monday of each month.
Mark, Lincoln Highway.
So, uh, between Commissioner Evans and myself, we've spent most of our time here searching for the manager and, uh, also working, uh, on the budget with Paul. And, uh, so time has been limited, so we have not, uh, met other than, uh, myself and Commissioner Evans and Planning Commission Chair, uh, Adam Thomas, uh, met to talk about the, uh, zoning update. So we've, we've been trying to work on that and finalize that proposal so that we can get it to Nancy when she gets here and let her do her magic and, and see what comes out. Um, we are hopeful that, you know, that beginning in the, beginning of the year with a new manager, we can really get ourselves back on track. Um, and, uh, Mark and I can focus back on Lincoln Highway and, you know, move that forward. That's our plan.
Okay, Ingleside Golf Course. Our next meeting is coming up Monday, October twenty-third at 5:45 PM at the golf course. Feel free to come by and see what's going on. Ingleside is slow but sure. Things are coming along at the golf course with Nicole and JT. Goals, we're chipping away at things, setting short time goals. Nicole is working on guardrails right now. We hired five part-time people, twenty-nine and a half hour weeks. Carts, the golf carts are coming. April 2024 golf rates will be going up. Parts are being ordered for manufacturers for one of the mowers. The eleven-foot mower is in good shape. That's the good news. And good things happen when, when and with patience and change. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Uh, question, uh, isn't, didn't she, isn't she lowering the, she's starting the winter rates now, I believe? Isn't she to encourage people to come?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a good day out there on the golf course. I, I stopped by and had a little surprise visit for Nikki. If you're out there, she wasn't there, got to ride a golf course and just kind of looked at the different, um, landscaping that was done and met a nice gentleman out there. I don't really remember his name. A lot of new people there. Uh, he had done some planting and put the mums out at the sign and he was doing some real cool things. And I said, well, I really appreciate you. It looks good. It looked very inviting and just took us on a nice little ride around the course. And that was different and it was a nice day. It was a nice group of gentlemen out enjoying it. Some ladies were out earlier that day, this morning, so. So Nikki, I was looking for you today.
Good comment, Jane. All right, additional business. Uh, Denise, I, I know we have a change in the meetings in November. Uh, November ninth, I believe we're not able to meet and we're going to switch it to.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay. And, and do we need to add that to the next agenda or just make a comment, public comment that we're going to switch it?
Public comment, you have to advertise.
It'll be advertised? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Uh, November ninth is the Kato Conference. That's why we are switching. And any other dates, uh, as far as the budget presentation? Do we have a, in line?
Lisa did give us a tentative schedule. So the sixteenth, we need to advertise by that date in order to vote on it by December fourteenth. So, um, you know, we need, um, we'll, we'll present the, the budget to the, to the rest of the board and the public um, on the sixteenth and, uh, we can advertise it from there, then be able to vote on it fourteen of December.
Okay. All right. Any other additional business?
Yes, um.
Oh, yes, yeah, the reason why we amended our agenda. Thank you.
Like to, uh, read a, uh, proposed resolution that we would like to, uh, present to Mr. Johnson, Johnson tomorrow. If the board, uh, permits a resolution. On this day, the twelfth of October in the year of 2023, on behalf of our residents and on behalf of all those who came before us, the Callan Township Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Mr. Kenneth Johnston during his walk of freedom, the quest to bring awareness and appreciation of the African-American communities who lived here, lived free in Callan and throughout Chester County in the nineteenth and twentieth centuries. Callan supports you in your mission to explore and honor the free black families, farmers, soldiers, teachers, clergy, and entrepreneurs who established small businesses, built churches and thrived in Callan during the dark days before the Thirteenth Amendment and on through the inequities of Reconstruction and decades of separate but equal. We recognize the strong spirit of a people who thrived regardless of the suppression they faced and continued along the path to, uh, equality. Their legacy lives on in the bricks, mortar, wood and stone with which communities were built upon a foundation of freedom. The imprint they left on all of Chester County must be brought into focus as these stories need to be told. These lives should never be forgotten. We are motivated and honored by your work and wish you Godspeed on the rest of your journey.
Very well written.
Can we, uh, approve that?
Yes, all right, uh, any questions on this? Residents, at this time? Entertain a motion to, uh, approve this resolution?
So moved.
Oh, we, we do?
Resolution?
Yes. No, I'm, I'm asking for a motion to approve.
I, I thought Jane said.
I said so moved.
Oh, so moved.
I, that's why I'm looking for.
Oh.
Looking for a second.
Who do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, five zero. We'll have this printed out for these folks, uh, because.
Did you get that?
Mark and Jane will meet him tomorrow at what time?
I sent it at the last minute.
Probably night.
And I have it printed on good stock on Callan letterhead for us to sign tonight.
Fine.
Is that at all possible? If it can't be, understand. My fault.
Commissioner Evans would be more than happy to show up here at six in the morning.
Yeah.
And I'll, because I'm going to drive him over to sign.
I'll be over getting you coffee.
Right, there.
It's a good thing.
It was going to be.
Yeah.
Making not a part of history.
All right, any other additional business? All right, public comment? Any public comment at this time? I see none here in the township building. Any in online?
Can I just say one thing before, um, adjourn? I, I just want to, uh, acknowledge the, the staff and the rest of the board. This has been a little bit of a diff- difficult time without a, a manager at the helm. But, uh, I believe, and I think the public should know, that our staff here has really, really gone, uh, above and beyond.
That is so true.
And I think, they think they just need to be recognized for that. They have, they've kept the lights on, the ship moving forward without a leader. And I think that's, uh, you know, a yeoman's job, so, uh, I just want to thank and recognize, as well as my fellow board members. Everybody has poured their heart and soul into finding the right person for Callan Township. I, I just want to acknowledge everybody that, that is here and does the work every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. So we can finally pack up the cots that are in the back room and, and, and move home. All right, any other public comment? At this time, I, I, I hear the Phillies are playing, so, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved, second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great evening. Go Phillies.